All right, it's 8:30. Let's call to order the Board of Franklin County Commissioners Meeting for Wednesday, June 17.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
President.
Commissioner Howard?
President.
Chair Weymeyer?
President.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
President.
Commissioner Dunn?
President.
All right, if you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for our invocation today led by Reverend Bruce Beatty of the Church of the Nazarene in Ottawa.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we give you praise for the opportunity we have today to be able to come and spend this time together in the event of this commission meeting. Each meeting is open with a pledge to our nation and would ask that you would help us each in all the turmoil and all the events that are happening across our nation to be able to unite together in the spirit of your love, to be able to work through the issues that we have in that spirit of love and take away the discord and the bitterness and the anger and the hatred that seems to manifest itself in a lot of things that are happening. We are under attack from a virus, we're under attack from racism and many other issues that are affecting our nation. So, Lord, I would ask and my prayer would be that we would come together in unity and in love. I would ask that as this commission deals with the agenda that's on the schedule for today, that you would give them discernment, that you would give them wisdom, that you would give them cooperation as they come together for the benefit of this county and for the people that reside in this county. Father, we just ask for your grace to come upon us, meet the challenges that we have in your spirit of love, in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. All right. Correspondence and organizational business, anything, Derek? Nope? Public comment? Do we have any public comment today?
Yes, we do.
All right. Citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes. The commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business and public comment is not regarded and permitted in regards to pending legal matters or personnel matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Brian Webster?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Webster, 11:08, Osborne Road. Reason for my visit today is to respectfully request, with your permission, to review a work order from August 2018. It's in the county public works department.
May 18?
That's correct.
Is that a document you want to see, Mr. Webster?
Would like to review the document, yes.
Okay, if you get with me through the normal open records process, then I'll help you, I'll help you get that document.
Very well, thank you. Thank you.
All right, anything else? For public comment? All right. Consent agenda today would include minutes from our June 10 meeting, our June 15 study session, claim vouchers in the amount of $690,797.05. And that is it for consent agenda, I believe, right?
Did you get both sets of minutes?
Yep. Stay sessioned in the meeting. All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Would you like to second it?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Our first item of business is to accept the resignation of one of the county planning commissioners.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. It's been a while since you had to tolerate this old guy in front of you, but we're here this morning to request that you accept the letter of resignation from Jason Camus. He has served for a couple of years on the planning commission. He had great difficulty in attending a lot of the meetings because of conflict with his work, and because of that, he has decided that it would be better if he were to resign. I have a letter of appreciation for the chairman to sign, and we would ask that you approve the acceptance of the request for his resignation.
All right. Any problems? Go ahead.
Just like to thank him for the time he did spend on it. It's hard to get people to do that. It ties up quite a bit of time, and of course, it's volunteer, and so I'd like to thank him for stepping up and doing it and understand the situation, and I would make the motion to accept his resignation.
I would echo his remarks, and you know, because the planning commission this year, or last year, we went through some big decisions as far as sustainable energy, and that was a lot of extra time and meetings that were put into that, so I would second that motion.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Thanks, Larry. Sorry to see Jason go. He always had good comments during planning commission meetings, but so will be open the process back up to letters and so forth to replace that?
Yeah, we have a couple that are going off as well in October, so we'll have three openings. We've already been contacted by individuals who are interested. I think we're going to have some good possibilities, so I'm actually excited about, about where the planning commission is going. But yeah, we will be, I don't know that we're going to advertise right now. We'll probably just wait until October and do it all at once because we still have a quorum, but come October 1 or slightly before that, we'll advertise for three spots. So, I don't know that we have three interested candidates at this point, but I know we have a couple that would be really good that I think we'll be able to put on there.
How many do you have on your commission?
It's a nine-member.
How in the world did you ever get that many? That just seems like...
Well, that's a decision that was reached by the county commissioners several years ago, but that's not uncommon when you have a five commission board, that you would get more representatives throughout the entire county, and that was one of the things we tried to achieve was to get some balance throughout the county of representation on the planning commission.
All right, thanks, Larry. Our second item of business would be to consider adding a couple weeds to the county's list of noxious weeds. I think Pat Campbell's here to introduce this item a little further.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Um, as you have in your packet, there's a growing weed in the county. It's called cut-leaf teasel and common teasel, very, very aggressive type weed. This past spring, the state has declared it as what they call a county option noxious weed, so the state recognizes the problem, but it's not a statewide problem like a musk thistle or the bindweed. So, what I'm asking from the commission to do, I would like to see it put on as the county option noxious weed so that we can enforce it like the other species of noxious weeds we have. It won't go into effect until 2021, when I give you, you folks, a new eradication plan to approve for the year, but I'm getting ahead of the game, so I'm not fighting it in January trying to get state approval, because if it gets passed here today, I have to go on to the state and the secretary has to approve it also. So, like I say, hopefully you got, if, if none of you know what it is, the pamphlet you guys got sent to you has some real good pictures of it. I can tell you 11 different spots to begin with in the county that we have, been fighting it, making headway, but I can't get to private land, so. But like I say, it's all start on the interstate system as a decorative plant, and then the mowers, they mow it in the fall and they just drag it everywheres, and about every place that I-35 crosses one of our roads is full. And like I said, I can't reach, I can't get on private property, but we're doing, doing like what, what we can on, on the, on the public side, so.
What's the negative impact of it? Is it invasive? Is it not conducive to agriculture?
It's, it's, they classify it right now as an invasive species. That's why noxious is one step above, but it's, it's the same demeanor as, as the musk thistles, and it'll just go in there, it'll starve out the vegetation that's under it, and you'll just have bare ground. So, if you get ahead of it, you know, you can, you can fight it back and then get your, your forage or your, our ditches back or whatever it may be.
All right.
I, I have not, so I'm looking at pictures of it. I have not seen it with the little, the purple band around it like that, the burr?
Yeah.
Once it becomes the burr?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I've seen that, I've seen that on the other side of the dyke. I, I, in my yard, I have an acre and a half, but I'm surrounded by fields, and if I walk the edge of those fields in the fall, oh, yeah. I can pull, I pull those out.
That is probably bull thistle.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not teasel. You don't have teasel down there, not your, not, not where you're at.
You don't think so?
Nope.
Okay, it's what, then?
It's, it's probably a bull thistle.
Okay.
That's what it's called. Yeah, but the, I mean, and like I say, it's all the same family, they're all cousins, so they look a lot alike.
They're all nasty.
Yes, they are. Yes, they are. But I mean, they'll grow between six and eight foot tall.
Oh, yeah, these don't.
Yeah. And like I say, if you, I mean, if you guys just want to take a quick drive, just go right here to 59 and I-35. Look both directions, both sides, it's all right there. I mean, that'd give you a, a good idea of what it's going to be like if you don't take care of it.
So, what, what, what do you do? Just spray it?
Yep. Yeah, there's five different chemicals that are approved for, for the teasel. We've had real good luck using a chemical we called a milestone, which on that sheet you guys, that's the amino prylid. I'm going around right now with another chemical called plateau, and that is the, the chemical of imazapic. There, it's showing good sign of it also. I like the milestone better because it does carry residual, a little bit of residual in the ground, so to get the rosettes that have not started yet. But the plateau, I'm using it right now because I can also use it on Johnson grass, bindweed. I'm trying to cover as many as I can in one, one pass, so.
And the chemical will be available through you for anyone out there?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah, it'll still be, all be part of our, our program.
Have we had to take contract again this year?
No, sir. This is the second year they've not done the state.
Oh, are they doing it theirself now?
Um, I can't answer that.
Are they offering it?
They're, they're supposed to have a, I've not talked to Bruce out there. I, I'm not, honestly, Don, I'm not 100% sure.
I can see the big problem with this, and we got to do our part.
Yes.
You know, big part, the state doesn't do anything. We're still going to have it and it's still going to...
Well, seeing that's also part of it. If I can get declared in this county, then we can, I've got a card to say, let's do a little better job.
Take care of it, yeah, awesome.
So, yeah.
How many counties do you know?
Right now, I am, I am laying the groundwork for the rest of the state.
I know, I say, well, it's Eastern Third, I know they say that it's only...
But I am the first program to make this far, to get this far to, to get it approved by the county, and then it'll go on to the state after that. But I'm, like I say, I'm basically putting the groundwork down for everybody else, I hope, to make it easier for them to get it approved through.
We know it's a problem, so...
Yeah, I, I think it's going to be, you know, I was here four or five years ago, and it was just really starting. It was pretty horrid then, but it's, it's terrible now. And like I say, it just, it's amazing how prolific it is.
You know how it got started, don't you?
Uh, yes, it was brought over to, there's two things, either, some of it was brought over as a ground cover because it, it makes wonderful ground cover, it holds the ground there, but nothing else grows. And then it's also ornamental, the florists.
And they get a medical, something out of it, too.
Okay, so I hadn't, I hadn't heard that part. That's interesting. But yeah, I mean, the, the, back in the 80s, a lot of the florists used them because they have beautiful purple blooms, purple and white blooms, looks great in an arrangement. Well, then they just get tossed out by the roadside from the cemetery or whatever, and here you are.
Pat, do you got to have a chemical application permit by it?
No, no, the chemicals that we have listed do not. It's just, it's just a general public chemical that anybody can come purchase.
Well, would anyone like to make a motion to declare common teasel and cut-leaf teasel a noxious weed in Franklin County?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who's second out there?
Right.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, folks, appreciate it. We'll see you again.
Good luck.
Our third item of business is Consider For Approval Program Guidelines for Distribution of CDBG Funds.
Now, we've been dealing with this community development block grant for, oh, four or six weeks now. This is the latest step in the process. We are required to establish program guidelines. You have those in front of you. I have Paul Bean here this morning to kind of talk through those and answer any questions that you have, so.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
You've had, I, I hope you've had a chance to kind of look through this. On this grant, the last step before we can officially take applications is for you to approve the procedures or the guidelines and the eligibility requirements. A lot of those are driven by the, the state. We can have some flexibility in that, just want to lift up some, some things that we've inserted. One is we would not allow national change to be eligible. We kind of want to help the local business, not the national changes, they have more, more resources to support those operations. And the, the other adjustment and, and change I would make, subject to what I already sent you with your approval, is initially when we started this, under parameters on your document, I indicated in there a couple of times, this would be for refunding expenses through a 60-day period. I'd like to ask your permission, and this is up to us, to extend that to a 90-day period, so we're going from March, April, and May. Now that we've moved on about a month since this started, I felt like that might be appropriate, but it's certainly up to our discretion how, how long of a period we want to make applicable for reimbursement. But I do ask that you would consider a 90-day period as a change in what I've already submitted to you. On the maximum grant, I just want to lift up again, some of that is up to us. The guidelines, there's some maximums per employee and per business that they suggest, but we can kind of tweak these to our particular community, and what we've done here is put a limit, a maximum limit of reimbursement for a sole proprietor of $10,000. Two to five is a maximum of $30,000, and six to 50 is a maximum of 50. The intent is to try and spread that out. The, the state didn't have a, a smaller cap for sole proprietor. They started just from one to five at $35,000. I've lowered these a little bit, just again, because I want us to be able to help as many different individuals and businesses as we can, but that's again, something that you all, if you want to change and, and tweak differently, that's your decision to make. These are, these are my recommendations based on conversations with our consultant and other economic development directors as to what I feel would be a good, good process moving forward. Just a reminder, the process involved here is once you approve this today in whatever form, with Casey's great help, we'll be able to announce this right after the meeting, that we can formally accept applications, so folks can come to my office or email me, or they can go to the Franklin County webpage and download the application packet, and then those applications need to be brought to me or sent to me electronically. And then I have a three-person committee, and we'll review those applications, but the decision is made by you as a commission as to whether or not somebody is approved. So, I guarantee you, next week, we'll be in front of you with some, some recommendations. We already have folks that are filling out application paperwork, just have not been able to accept it until you make this last step. I'm happy to answer questions, concerns, or...
I have, I, it seemed, last, I thought I had remembered that the maximum grant was 30,000, and this says 50,000. Was that a change, or is that just, I just misremembered?
Yeah, you're, you're remembering for the one to five.
Okay.
The, the six to 50's actually always been higher than that.
And then I'm just going to point out that your email is incorrect on here. There isn't K in Franklin, so.
Oh, thank you, yeah. Gosh, thank you.
So, Paul threw out the idea of expanding to 90 days from the 60 to include some time period that's happened since maybe these guidelines were wrote. I assume that'd be from March through May?
Yep. March, April, and May would be expenses that we would consider refunding that are eligible.
Anybody have any issues with that? And then you threw out some ideas on the caps, which I think are a little different than what's on this document too, right?
No, the caps are what's on this document. Sole proprietor's 10, two to five's 30, and six to 50's 50.
But that's the maximum that we pay out. That does not mean that we can't pay less.
Right. That's exactly right. And again, you all will approve the final award.
Hate to give it all out and have somebody really come and go need it and say, sorry, it's gone.
That's right. That's why we, that's why I put even a lower number on the sole proprietor, so we, the idea being how many jobs can we help? So, trying to expand that impact over more people.
Does this grant money have a certain length of time? If we don't give it out, it has to be returned back?
We have one year from, so June 15th of 2021, if we haven't given it out, we'd go back to the state. So, the plan is we'll see what kind of demand we get, and if we don't, aren't able to just give it out through that, I'll aggressively go seek people out because I don't want to send it back to the PICA. I want to help folks in the community. And I think it's important for people to understand, this is a grant, it's not a loan. Some people still feel like this is a loan, and, and it's not. It's, it's, it's a grant to help them get on their feet.
I will say that I did make some phone calls to some businesses that I thought could really use that, and either you had already contacted them, well, good job, or another commissioner had already contacted them, so good, we are trying to get the word out, so that's awesome. Appreciate that.
Like I said, Casey's been awesome in helping, and we, we'll really blast it. I'm sending it to the city clerks with Casey's help and getting it all throughout the county. It'll go out to FC DC membership and ask them to share that with folks that they're aware of, and obviously through the, we'll do a press release and those types of things today.
Are there any changes other than the 90-day period that differs from the document in front of us that the consultant recommended?
No, that's the only, that's the only change.
Just make sure we include that when we approve it then, so. Any more questions for Paul?
Paul, has farmers applied for this, too?
They sure can, yep, yep. And I know there was confusion because I got three different answers right after I visited with you guys last week, but the, the last stance was if they have already gotten PPP money or EIDL money, they are still eligible under this program, they just can't use it for the same expense. So, obviously, we don't want to duplicate. So, if they've participated in PPP or EIDL, they would just have to show us what that money went for, and then we could help them with expenses that qualify outside of that parameter.
Well, I'm trying to think of how farmers could have been impacted because they could still farm, but then I also think of the farmers who had to dump...
Right.
Milk or whatever they had because there was no market.
Yeah, if there's a, if there's a lost revenue that we can see, we might be able to help them out. Yep.
Well, would anybody like to make a motion to approve the program guidelines for distribution of community development block grant funds, including expanding the parameters to a 90-day period, March through May?
I would make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
All right, thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Do you have anything for staff reports since you're already vertical?
This has been a, a big project. Off the top of my head, no, I don't.
Okay, all right, I'll put you on the spot later. Derek?
I've gotten several questions about the tax sale recently, so I want to give an update on where that's at. And you will recall, this tax sale has the Cove's properties included, and the city is working with our mutual bond council on effective ways to wipe out all of the special assessments that have saddled those properties, and so I think they've got a pretty clever plan in place. We are currently, it's in the district court and the defendants, so the individuals who haven't paid their taxes, we are right in the meat of their answer deadline, and so once that expires, then we will petition the court for a judgment in our favor and then ask for an order for an actual tax sale, which is where the properties will then be sold. That is hard to predict in a normal year, given the backlog associated with COVID-19. It's really hard to say when we will be in front of the court on this, but it is in the court, and it's something that I've instructed our council to push pretty hard on, so I will continue to give updates as they come. As you all know, Monday, we discussed our 2021 budget. I, you know, I thought all of you asked great questions. It's, it's substantially similar to the 2020 budget. We have our pay plan raises in there, and that's largely it. Janet and I will now work to refine the budget books. We will put the revenues and the value portions into the budget, and then we'll come back and we'll be able to have kind of a full picture on what that's going to look like. I don't believe, and, and time will tell, but I don't think we're going to have an issue keeping the mill levy flat this year. My hope is that we can continue to put an equal, if not greater, amount into our two big reserve funds this year, so I'm actually really excited about it. I think when we have all the numbers inputted, it's going to look really good, so we'll do that over the next month or so. As I've told you, please reach out with any questions that you have. I would say that to anyone that have questions about our budget, please reach out because we like talking about it, so. COVID-19, I've got Nick here, he'll give you an update on that. Casey and I continue to get calls. We've gotten a lot of calls about fairs recently, and I know we've worked with the fair board on what the county fair might look like this year, and we kind of hope that that filters down to Lane and Richmond as well. I don't think I have anything else, so Nick, why don't you piggyback on that?
Good morning, Commission. Right now, we've had a total of 52 positive COVID cases in the community. 19 of those cases are still active. 33 have recovered. We've had 1,449 negative tests since the beginning of COVID. A lot of moving parts as we're starting to reopen. Derek talked about him, in case you're getting phone calls on the, the fairs, I've received a lot of phone calls from Audubon Municipal Auditorium and a lot of those places that are opening up to concerts, the farmer's market, they're starting back up at Legacy Square, there's been a lot of conversations about safety, and I will tell you, every partner we've worked with have been willing to work with us and do a great job. One of the big things that we focused on over the last week has been nursing facilities and the reopening of the nursing homes. K-Dads finally gave us guidance last week. On Friday, we got a conference call with a phase plan that they're asking that the nursing homes follow, so we had a conference call Tuesday, yesterday, I guess. A lot of the nursing facilities are still very leery to reopen. Richmond was reopened for a little while, they've kind of shut it back down a little bit to revise theirs. Rock Creek is working on a plan. Right now, we're waiting for the guidance for the assisted living facilities or the vintage parks, Morning Stars, the ones that really don't fall into the full skilled nursing facilities. We haven't gotten any guidance from K-Dads on that, so we're still working with them. I anticipate quite a few more Zoom calls before we see what they're doing, so. With that, I, I ask that people are patient because they have done a great job keeping COVID out of the, the nursing facilities and doing a great job of, of screening people as they come in, so I have been thankful for that. Really, that's what we got with COVID. Do you guys have any questions?
Any idea how many of those 52 have been hospitalized?
I know it hasn't been a large portion of them, but I, I don't have the exact number with me today, I'm sorry.
I did see from both Richmond and the county fairs are moving forward with 4H only, with none of the extras, none of the demolition of the rodeo or any of that stuff, or the, you know, amusement, so, I mean, I think people are, for one year, you know, we're going to just sit back and, yeah.
And I received the plans from Richmond, or from Lane Fair the other day, they dropped them by, and they're going to go forth with their fair, but if there's any question or concern, they're just going to cancel the whole fair, so they've got an all or nothing plan with what they're... they've got an all or nothing plan with what they're doing.
Good. Uh, Nick, uh, one problem I heard on the news was, uh, contact callers. Uh, how many contact callers do you use to follow up on the positives?
On the contact calls and reaching out to people? Is that what you mean?
Contact tracers.
How many people are making contact calls?
We, uh, we're in the process, as I talked to you about hiring two more, but right now, there's just three of us that do the contact tracing. And with the new guidelines from the state on though, I think what you're talking about, they have to be certified through the state to make those phone calls. And then they've also shut down some of the restrictions we had of calling employers and getting lists of employees from that. So we have, we have three now. Hopefully, when we get the LPN side, we'll be able to put two more through that to be able to do it. But with the restrictions that are being put by the state, they're making it tougher.
I think the goal, Roy, is to be, um, have people in place. We, I think we all believe that we're going to see an uptick in COVID in the fall. And so to have ample contact tracers in place by then, um, I am excited and we're still learning the details. Um, literally talked to Paul about it this morning, but the state has a committee and they are working on an additional funding mechanism for counties um, that ultimately flows down from the federal government. Additional contact tracers are exactly the type of expense that that funding is supposed to be used for. And so I, I don't think we're going to be bashful about trying to get additional people in here because I think we'll have a pretty ironclad mechanism for funding those positions. And so that's something I'm working closely with Nick on. But yeah, those two LPN positions will be two more. And then, you know, from there, we might even add another contact tracer to, we'll just have to wait and see what that ramp up into the fall looks like.
We get to a certain spot, contact tracing is no longer possible.
There is. When it gets to a large community spread or something like that, a lot of your bigger cities have really backed off on it. I will tell you, we call some of our larger communities around us and report individuals where they work. They really don't take a strong interest in it like we still are here. Um, and it's just because of the vast amount. But right now, I will tell you, we have been very successful with the cases and at least identifying the potential of where that.
Maybe that's why our numbers are not sky high, which is awesome.
And working with KDHE, like, you know, you've looked over the last month, we've tested a lot of people. The trailer has been essential for drive-through. We just did another thirty-some yesterday, I believe, or two days ago. And Ottawa Police Department, I thought JW here, um, have been great at delivering those samples for us. So anytime we've had to take stuff to KDHE, we've used Ottawa Police Department. They've, they've been great to work with. So a lot of community partners that came out of this. Any other questions?
Look like it. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Casey, you have anything?
I'll just echo what Nick and Derek both said. We've been getting a lot of questions still about COVID and each week it seems to change based on what's going on. So now it's all about events. And there's been lots of questions about lots of events. So we did put together some recommendations for events throughout the county. Um, and that hasn't actually been publicized, but I've been sending it out to people that have asked for it, but it does, I'll get it on the website so anybody can find it. But I'm finding that we have a lot more events in the community than I thought we did, just like random things, like Friends of K-State Dinner, stuff like that, that they, they have lots of questions. So, um, other than that, my job is kind of getting a little bit back to normal. Um, and we're starting to, because of all the questions on events, I'm talking with all those that apply for TGT funds. Derek and I sat down and we are, um, starting to give those funds out based on when their event happens. So if their event's happening in July and we know it's going to happen, then those checks will be cut on the June thirtieth check date. Um, the rest of them, we'll just stay in contact with them as we progress through this to find out if they still plan on having the event before we actually cut the check. Um, other than that, I've been working with the Health Department. Robert, um, has a grant, um, the Substance Abuse Coalition Grant, and they needed a membership packet. So there's a lot of information and detail going into that. So I've been working with Robert on getting that put together for his coalition. Um, and I went back to the drawing board with our, um, branding. As soon as we, I'll bring that back to the commission, but as soon as we can get somewhere on that. Dustin and I have had preliminary conversations with our website designer that we have a free upgrade that was due about five years ago. Um, so we would like to utilize that sooner than later. Um, but we have to know exactly what we want that to look like yet. And that will be quite a process. So we're going to get back into that. Does anybody have questions for me?
I don't have a question, but I know this is a lot smaller scale, but when we're talking about the fairs and so forth, and I know everybody wants to get back to doing the thing and open up as much as we can, but, uh, it doesn't take a genius. All we have to do is look at what's happening in Florida and Texas and those places and, uh, see what happened when they opened up quick and without many, uh, restrictions. So we don't want to step into that. So.
And everybody's been super receptive to our recommendations, um, asking good questions. So I, I think that we need to thank our community for, you know, doing their part.
And I would echo that. There, there is a lot of nastiness on social media, and I'm sure that doesn't surprise any of you. But the people who hold the events, the people that own the businesses have all, I think, nearly without exception, have been wonderful to work with. And so it, it is, um, it's nice that the people that actually have to make the decisions and make the sacrifices are willing to do so. And I don't want the board to lose sight of that. Um, the other thing that I would touch on is the rebranding. Um, when we discuss this, you'll recall, we discussed this back at the retreat and all five of you agreed that it was a project that we should pursue. Uh, one of the things that, so when Janet and I sat down to go through the budget, um, we were looking at salary and personnel numbers. And, and it occurred to me that we have a lot of employees who are retiring in between twenty and twenty-one. And, and we're going to need to recruit a lot of new employees. And when you talk about branding, um, that's all part of the package that we are trying to offer. Like, people go to our website, like, things like this matter. Having a polished presentation matters. I mean, we're at the point where, uh, obviously, I'm biased, but I think we are a very high-functioning, efficient government. Um, we don't have major flaws that need addressed. We're at the appropriate point where, in my opinion, we need to start polishing and looking at things like our website, like our logos. And so that's what we're working on. And that's what I would like to have a thoughtful discussion with the board about. We took your input from the last meeting and we now have additional logos. Some, some have the courthouse, some don't. Some have a more detailed courthouse. And so, but that's really why we're looking at doing this. I think if you put yourself in the position of a young professional and, and you're looking at where you want to work and you go on this antiquated website that's cludgy and difficult to navigate, like it, it creates an obstacle that isn't necessary. I mean, that's one of the reasons we hired Casey's position to begin with is to kind of help make recommendations in that regard. So I, I hope that you will engage that discussion with an open mind.
It's just a matter of first impressions. You're putting on a suit and tie as opposed to flip flops and sand, you know, and shorts to talk about jobs. You know what I mean?
Is that something we could put on a study session?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and we will. That, that will be, um, and perhaps the next study session, actually. So we're on the cusp of being ready. So, yeah, we'll discuss it.
I'm not sure I've ever heard the word "cludgy" before, but yes, we understand your position.
Fair enough.
Anything else?
Anything else for Casey?
That's all I got.
Alright. Sheriff?
Good morning. I have a, a few things to go over, um, just to update you on. They're in not any order of significance. They were just as I recalled them and got them on my list. Um, the first thing that I wanted to update you on is that we, um, have a deputy that, um, has taken upon himself to, um, apply for some grants. Um, he's going through a, uh, a master's in public administration program right now. And one of the classes, one of his projects was he had to, had to write a grant. And so, uh, he's, I think it's something that he started liking to do. And so we've encouraged him to continue that. Um, we have been awarded a grant through Firehouse Subs, um, through that company. I believe Nick has used them before as well. Um, and this grant that we have, we currently carry the AEDs, um, in our supervisor vehicles. This grant will cover the purchase of getting an AED in all of our patrol cars. And so we just recently received the funds for that. They've been deposited. Um, Jody's notified me that the, that the funds are there. And so, uh, that's exciting and it's really good to see that, um, that people are, staff's taking the initiative to do some of those things. We have another grant out that will, uh, that will add some other, some other additional equipment, um, to our vehicles. The thing about these being a private grant is that we don't have a whole lot of, uh, continued reporting and things like that when you do, when it's a, when it's a federal grant. So, um, that, that was good, good news for us. We do have a, a couple openings in the jail. Um, but I wanted to update, um, the board that this last year, there, not too long ago, there was a, um, the board took action on the pay plan for corrections staff. And one of the things that we focused on there was, was being able to recruit, um, from a, a wider pool and to get more applications in. And we, um, have more applications for corrections officers than we've ever had, um, while, since I've been in, in office. So, um, and they're viable, good viable candidates. So I, I think that the action that, that, that you guys took and the steps that we did in that in, in increasing that starting pay, I think that has played a big factor in that. I know there's other things because when the economy goes bad, more people look for government jobs. When the economy's good, not so much. And so there are other factors and I know that, but I do believe, um, that that pay plan uh, paid, played a big part in that. So I wanted to, um, just say thank you for that and let you guys know where we are on that. Um, with a lot of things that are going on, um, across the, our nation right now, um, law enforcement agencies are taking a hit. And, um, there are a lot of, several agencies have had a lot of people leaving and taking early retirements and things. That's even been some agencies in our local area. Um, to address that from a leadership perspective, um, myself and the sheriff from Johnson County and Miami County got together. And we're going to be hosting, um, a national, a national speaker that presents for law enforcement. It's on resiliency. Um, we have a community advisory board and Paul's part of that. And one of the big things was, was wellness, employee wellness, taking care of our people. And, um, this speaker, um, has agreed to come in. Um, and we will, should be able to get all of our staff through this, through this class. Um, and it's, uh, it's for an overall wellness, mental health and, and things like that. So to help keep people focused and reminded while you're on the job and to give them the tools that they need to deal with the added stress and things. So just wanted you to know, we are taking the steps to take care of our people and, uh, and to keep everybody healthy and intact. Hasn't been too long ago that a new truck stop came in to our county up in Wellsville. Um, I understand the role of law enforcement in economic development and Paul and I have talked about that a little bit as well. So we have reached out with both, with, with the new truck stop up there and we're working in conjunction with them as far as what it is that they want from us. And, uh, we're helping Wellsville PD out with that as well. Um, also, you may be interested to know, um, it's a, it seems to be a lot bigger stop, truck stop than, than Love's, but it has not hurt that business down there at all. They are both just, they're always, the lots are full every night. So, um, our, our economy and the, and those type of things seem to be doing very well, um, through in Franklin County, um, all up and down I-35. With communications, sorry, we're kind of jumping around here, but through communications, uh, it's important for us at the sheriff's office to get our message out to people. And, uh, one of the ways that we wanted to do that, that we thought was going to be effective, was going to be, um, developing a phone app. And, uh, we had some meetings. I had, um, Dustin and Casey, um, in, involved in those. And we've met with a, with a company. We have, um, we're, we're in the process of getting that up and running to have a phone app that will be, um, available to, uh, to the public. And they can download it. Uh, no charge to them. We can get information and alerts sent out to them. We can receive tips, um, for drug tips and crime tips through that as well. So I just wanted you guys to know, when you end up seeing that, we're going to, um, as soon as it's live and not just in the test mode for our staff, then, uh, we're going to really be pushing that out, um, to get that out, out to everyone. And then the last thing that I have, um, unless you all have questions, will be that, again, back to the current climate, I know that there's a push to, uh, for criminal justice reform and things like that is, is what they're calling it. I just wanted all of you to know, our policy, um, that are in place, we already require that if one of our staff members witnesses another staff member doing something that is, that's over the top, they already are required to intervene in that. As far as what the media is calling chokeholds, um, we've never taught a chokehold. Um, choking is on the inside anyway. Um, it would be more of a stranglehold, but we've never taught that. There is a, there is a hold called an LVNR, lateral vascular neck restraint. We do not train that. And it, those are already prohibited by our policy unless it is a lethal force situation. We, we've already, we already have those things in place. And we already require all of our, um, all of our employees to go through, um, bias, um, training, um, on an annual basis. State law requires that. And then we, and we require it by our own, by our own policy as well. So a lot of the things that are being talked about that they're saying, hey, these things should be put in place, um, de-escalation, all of those things, we have those in, in place already. So I just wanted you to all rest assured that, that we have those things that are, that are there. So other than that, if you guys have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
I don't have a question. I was going to bring this up in commissioner comments, but being you're up there, I'll bring it up now. Um, I don't do Facebook, so I'm totally in the dark about what's going on, on stuff that's coming out on Facebook. But I did get two phone calls, asked me about, a protest is supposed to take place Friday night, is what they're telling me. Um, they, their questions were, what are we doing about it? Um, what's the sheriff department doing? I know JW's here. I don't think he came just to watch us, so he might have some information on this. And like I said, I don't know anything about it. I don't know what's, what's scheduled. I don't know if there is anything scheduled. I'm sure you guys can.
There, there is. What, what I would, I'm, obviously, it would be counterproductive for us to say, hey, this is our response. And these are all of our plans. So, so I'm not going to, so I'm not going to do that. But I will say, there is, there is a, there is a, um, an organization that is, is going to be hosting a peaceful demonstration, peaceful protest is how, is how they have got it advertised. Um, JW has been working and the city has been working directly with those organizers. We are part of that a, as well. And, um, I can, I can assure you, we do have, we're, we're well aware of what's going on. We do have plans in place. And we are communicating very, very well on it. So, um, I've also received many, many phone calls on it. Some of the phone calls range from, uh, what do I need to do to why in the world are you allowing this to happen? And I will just say, um, they have a constitutionally protected right to peacefully assemble. That's on both sides. I know that there's counter protests that are, you know, organized as well. They have a right to do that as long as it's, it's peaceable. And so as long as they stay peaceful, um, then they will be there and we will be there to ensure everyone's safety and to protect their, their rights to do so. And, uh, so it, it is there. And so it is there, and we're all very hopeful and expecting that it's going to go off without any problems. We also don't want to see what we've seen in other cities across the, across the country, so.
Well, I'd just like to say that both the city of Ottawa Police and the sheriff's department, we appreciate you. It's nice not to make the national news or the local news because of anything that happens on Zoom.
Thank you.
Do a good job.
And I will piggyback on that, because Casey and I have gotten several of those calls or inquiries. As your legal, why isn't the county doing something to shut this down? As your legal counsel, like, I am going to, I'm never going to recommend that you violate someone's constitutional rights. I mean, he hit the nail on the head. They have a right to assemble. They have a right to peacefully protest. That is very much covered under the First Amendment. And that's to say nothing of the fact that this protest is slated to be within the city limits of Ottawa, where this board doesn't have that sort of jurisdiction to begin with. And so I have encouraged folks, to the extent they have concerns or questions, to contact City Hall, because that is the appropriate body for answering these inquiries.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janet? Do you have anything?
We got the ballots programmed yesterday and the day before, and so they are all ready to go. We have to legally be ready for the federal ballot to go out on Saturday of this week, so we do have a couple people signed up to get a federal ballot. Those are military people around the country and out of the country, and then other citizens living abroad. So we do have a couple people signed up for those already for a primary ballot, and we'll be getting those out this week. So we've been getting a really good response to our mailer that we sent out, and have had a lot of those come back already. We've had a lot of questions in my office, and I would definitely encourage people to continue calling my office if they have questions about those, how to fill those out. We have been having people miss adding their driver's license number to that, so we are going to be following up with some of those people to make sure everyone who wants to get a ballot gets one, even if we did get their form back and it's not completely filled out. So just a lot of different things. We've got a couple different mailers that are going to be going out this week in regards to polling locations, and so some of our citizens will be getting those for polling location changes, just due to concerns with different situations at polling locations. And we're getting ready to work with all of our townships, cemeteries, fire districts, all of those, and getting their budgets put together. So we'll be starting that next week with three small cities. We'll be working with a budget planner that comes to my office that specifically works with cities to get their budgets done, and so we'll start seeing those rolling out in the newspaper, those notifications that let you know when the budget hearings are for these entities, and so concerned citizens can go and review their budgets with them. So be looking for those in the newspaper.
Do you have an elderly voter or somebody who doesn't have a driver's license? What is the process? What do you, if they don't have a driver's license?
We've never encountered that situation, because most of the time they have a non-driver's license, you know, a state ID, so they're required to have ID for other things that they do, like, a lot of times, like, doctor's offices require them to show ID and stuff too, because they have to prove their identity to get their services for, you know, Medicaid or whatever like that. So most of the time, they do have a non-driver's license, so.
I had a question from one of your workers. Are they going to be required to wear a mask all day?
At this current time, that is what the secretary of state is, is asking us to require, and so much so that they paid for all the masks for us, and I have already received them, 20 boxes for all my locations, so, so...
She didn't have to wear a mask all day. She'd be glad to do that. If she did, she probably would.
I completely understand that, and that is why I sent a mailer out to all of my election workers. Normally, we would just contact them and have a one-on-one discussion with each of them, but I felt like there was so much information that they needed to receive this year, and specific to what we are doing to protect them and what's going to be happening at the polling location, that I did send that information out to them, and that, and gave them that opportunity to say, wearing a mask all day is not going to work for me. And I have had a couple people that specifically wrote on their form, if I don't have to wear a mask all day, then I would work. And so we are taking that into consideration, and depending on what the, what the situation is at election time, when we seat those election workers, then we may be able to call some of those. But like I said, at the current time, the secretary of state's office is telling us that they expect us to have our election workers wear a mask all day. I, they will be able to step away and take it off, you know, when they have a break, and they do get breaks throughout the day. But I think it, from my point of view, it makes some people feel more comfortable when they're, you know, in front of someone that has a mask on, and I need to make sure that all of my voters feel comfortable coming in. I don't feel like there are too many of them, that it makes someone feel uncomfortable when someone's sitting in front of them with a mask on, but there are people who would feel uncomfortable if they didn't have one on. So I, my point of view is better, better safe than sorry, and when my election workers are sitting with each other all day, you know, the guidelines say, when you're sitting within six feet of each other for an extended period of time, that's, that's when the virus is transmitted to each other. So when they're sitting next to each other, which they have to be sitting within proximity to hear each other, to talk to each other, to get everyone checked in, they're going to have to be wearing that mask so they don't potentially infect someone sitting right next to them that is working with them, so.
David, Public Works?
Okay, commissioners, it seems like we've had a number of requests from farmers to get into some minimum maintenance roads so they can get into their fields, so we, we've been doing that quite a little bit. A couple of particular areas down on LaBette Terrace east of Alabama, it's a, an area that's adjacent to the railroad, and there's flood plain down there. It's always a mess, but we put a dozer and a grader down there, and they were able to, by the end of the day last Friday, they were able to make it so the farmer could get into his fields. We have two blade operators working together today on, oh, Finney Road east of Texas. It's another minimum maintenance. Farmer needs to get in the field, so we're out there helping, helping with that. We've had some success. I think I mentioned last week that we were teaming up our blade operators. We've got a couple of guys working together. They've been working on Ellis between Idaho and Delaware. That's a three-mile stretch, and there are several sections through there that need attention, and so they've been working together to kind of pull that, pull those areas back together. We're also continuing to work on the ditches on Jackson Road east of Delaware. There's, there's a low spot that really was in bad shape last year due to the floods, and we're just now kind of getting that pulled back together and creating a little better situation there. We're continuing to replace entrances and crossroad tubes, and then we've also, yesterday, we worked on a, oh, on Montana Road north of Kingman, that ditch that was built for Proximity Park, with all the floods, that nothing was able to take hold vegetation-wise to be able to hold that material together after construction was completed, and so we've gone in and with the help of the adjacent farmer to add some riprap and take care of some of those washes so that we have a good spot there. So our folks remain busy. You know, we're thankful for the sunshine, definitely.
All right. Let's go to commissioner, comments, and board reports.
Yeah, I finally got to go to Wellsville meeting last Wednesday. Paul was there also and gave a presentation on the grant that we're proposing. They also, probably you and Dave never know, but the deal on the road that hadn't been completed yet, you did get an email from them?
I didn't. I haven't yet, no.
Hey, did you get one? Okay, you were supposed to. You didn't. So what happened was, I was told by Pat, their inspector, that once they got the bid and was ready to go, the state changed what they needed to do. And they told them they had to make a concrete approach so far up there. So they went back to the drawing board. They have now rebid it. They're going to concrete it six inches deep, all the way up to the church. So that's what Pat told me. So they're planning on putting six inches of concrete all the way from 33 clear up to the little church up there, be at the other end of the property. I think ours would just pass the truck entrance, what we figured, and they're going to go ahead with their part and go on up to the church. So you might contact Pat if you need to know anymore on that.
Well, the money's there waiting on them, so we're ready to give it when they need it.
But anyhow, they are, that's what held it up, was having to go back and rebid and change, and, I mean, they have full intentions of, in fact, it's going to be better than original now, because it won't be asphalt, it'll be six inches of concrete. And they're doing a lot of, the streets and water, and it was a pretty mild meeting, and they are doing their social distancing up there. They're spread out even more than we are, but they don't have very big room either, but they're doing a pretty good job about it, too. So, you know, I thank Paul for coming up there. It's nice to see somebody in his position, not sending them emails, personally going up and presenting the, the situation, giving them the opportunity to ask questions rather than, what's this mean, you know? So to be in front of them and giving it, so, that's all I got.
Mr. Harrod? I don't have anything. Mr. Dickinson?
My son has said that I am addicted to weed-ing, and that day, we had a couple, a couple of weeks ago, we decided to volunteer to do those corners at the courthouse, and I actually was going to prove him right and volunteer to weed those corners, and I went into town, delivered my Wheels on Wheels, drove by there, and lo and behold, Mark from the maintenance department was already pretty much done. And so they got right on it that day, and it, I went by it last week, and the guys were out there putting on the final touches, and it looks wonderful. I think it's the largest corner of any of them. We only ended up doing one because the other one has been for many years, and has been very well maintained by an individual who didn't want to give up that, which was fine. So, but our corner is done. It looks beautiful. The water is out there every morning, and good job. And I would say that I have been trying to contact some of my constituents, and I bet this year I've had less than five people that have called me complaining. So I would agree with Derek that the county is in a good place. You know, if they do have a problem, people are willing to step up and, and, you know, get answers for them, so I am excited about where we are as a county.
You mentioned Main Street. I went down, they had a work day, not last weekend, the weekend before, went down and helped them and drove a dump truck for a few hours, and they got a lot of work done.
Roy?
Yeah, I had a Zoom board meeting with ECAN last night. Main thing we had was evaluation of our director, Crystal Anderson. She's been there a year, done a fantastic job, and flowing reports about how she transitioned from to be CEO of ECAN. ECAN is starting to do a little bit more with the weatherization, kind of opening up a little bit, and Head Start is going to start up in a little limited form in July with, trying to get kids ready for school this fall, so those are the kind of main, main highlights of the ECAN meeting. That's it.
Well, we need to hold a public building commission meeting after this, after we adjourn our regular session, so that we can discuss refinancing some debt to save money potentially. With that, we need to adjourn this meeting, give Dustin a few minutes to get our bond counsel on the phone, and then we can start up our public building commission meeting, so. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. Two minutes? All right.
Hey, Paul. I'll after a while. I've got something to you. You got my number, don't you?
Hold right into it?
Yeah, he said...
Okay.
I think it's almost ready right now. You want to run the rest of it?
No, I'm okay.
Okay.